Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I would like to call the regular city council meeting Monday, March 21st, 2022, to order. It is now 8:02 PM, and I'd like everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, if you could, for the record, would you acknowledge that we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Estev, Councilmember Wolfley, Councilmember Harrison, and Mayor Pro Tem Bofo, and then we have Mayor Adams virtual. The only ones absent right now is Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Indubumado.
Okay, thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I will ask if there are any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Hearing none, we will move on to the citizen participation. Madam City Clerk, are there any citizen participations this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'm gonna give the list to Mayor Pro Tem Bofo so he could call up the speakers.
All right, first up tonight, we have Millie Hall.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Steve Wolfley, Bofo, and Harrison, and staff. Millie Hall, I live in Bowie on Dunn Stable Court, 20721. I just have one question this evening. The charter call for Mayor Pro Tim to replace the mayor, what happens if both Mayor Pro Tim and the mayor needs to be replaced at the same time because of, because they sought higher elected positions and they won? What would happen?
I would ask the city attorney, and she would-
Perhaps, perhaps we can address that later in council comments for you, because I have an answer for you.
Okay, you haven't asked, but what I want, I want the whole public to know, so will you announce it publicly? Thank you.
We will address that. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Thank you again. The next speaker?
Next up, we have Karen Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor, and to Council-
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here today. I am a citizen of the Woodmore Highlands. I reside at 14206 Dunwood Valley Drive, and today I delivered, I emailed a letter out to all of the members to tell you about the experiences that I had as a resident who lived next door to squatters. I did that because I believe that this is a very important issue for all residents to feel safe and secure, not only within their homes, but as they come and go. And we had multiple incidences which were very unsettling and anxious, and we stayed that way just till recently. We now have a homeowner that has purchased the home next door to me, but I'll tell you, when people came by to even look at the property, because of the problem that went on for two years, we found ourselves calling the police out to see who was looking at the house. So, this is a really big issue. I don't think it just resides for myself, but I think for all residents, and it's probably wide in the state as to how squatters are dealt with, maybe it's a Prince George's issue, but it's something that needs to be addressed. When a homeowner is removed from their home through foreclosure, the bank owes us a better handling, from the city, for the residents. We are owed that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
All right, our next speaker is Jeffrey Cooper.
Good evening, Mr. Cooper. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Jeffrey Cooper, and I live at 3407 Dunwood Crossing Drive, and I speak to you as a homeowner, I'm also a member of the Public Safety Committee, and I'm here in my role as a resident of the city of Bowie. This issue regarding the squatters issue has been going on for a period of five years. Met with staff to try to come up with some solution as to what would be in place. I've sent you all letters regarding what's being done in the city of College Park, and I think if the city of College Park can come up with a solution, we by sure can come up with a solution here in the city of Bowie. And this is a, this legislation, it doesn't, we can charge mortgage foreclosure, mortgage companies for registering with the, with the Code Enforcement Office or Community Standards Office, so that there is a record. Again, my neighbor has testified who was impacted by the situation. It's a very serious issue, and I think that this is something that we can do better by, because we live here in the city of Bowie, and excellence is what we strive for. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so very much, sir.
And next up, we have Rhonda Billingsley.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Rhonda Billingsley, and I live at 1217 Durham Drive in Bowie, Maryland. And I believe when everyone started in office, you came down and visited South Bowie, we really appreciate it, and we appreciate some of the development that's happening as well, but however, we do have concerns, and with the beautiful homes that are going up, we have a trash problem, and the trash problem is way out of hand. I just showed some of my neighbors, some of the trash, there's a jacuzzi sitting, I just showed Adrian Bofo, the jacuzzi sitting on 301, there was a toilet sitting out by the exit going towards Six Flags on 214. The trash is just, has become an immense problem. We just had a meeting with our councilperson, Roxy, she came out and she heard some of the concerns. One of the things that we felt that could remedy the problem is having maybe trash recycling bins, as well as regular trash bins like North Bowie does. Maybe that would be helpful within the community. The other problem that we're having is our businesses in the community bringing home trucks and actually living in these homes with commercial trucks. I didn't know that now you can live in a community and you can have a fleet of trucks in the community parked in front of your home with lots of people coming in and picking up the truck. For a while, in the Durham community, we've had that problem at one of the homes that sits, well, I have to send you the address, I don't know the address right offhand, I'd be happy to send it to the council, but we've had an issue with one of the homes where they have a business and they have a fleet of trucks sitting in the residential community. And we're at a point of now trying to, we've talked with them, they've stopped the problem, but the problem has returned. And so now we're at a point of, we're finding these people in this home, but still, again, nothing's not, has not fixed the situation. So I'm wondering what the council is planning to do for the older communities within Bowie, how are you going to remedy that situation where you're not allowing commercial vehicles to, or businesses in that community where they're having the business in a home, in a small home, and there are several, as far as day, day homes or something like that, where they're taking care of sickly people, and they're bringing their people into the homes as well. So these are a lot of the things that are happening in South Bowie, and I'm just wondering how, what kind of legislation are you going to pass to remedy that issue? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any-
No, those are all the speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you. We will now have a presentation for Women's History Month by the Diversity Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Adams, council members, city staff, and Police Chief Neskey. Thank you all for putting me on the agenda tonight for a presentation. I think it's been a while since I've been here, I was under citizens' participation last time, but thank you all so much for having me this evening. And I am Elvita Dixon, I am a member of the city's Diversity Committee, and I'm here tonight to present our Heritage Month presentation. And Heritage Month is, we have a series of presentations that we do each month, and also now, we also have on our city's website a Heritage Month, so you can see some of the presentations and get additional information about Heritage Month. And Heritage Month is to remind the citizens and the people of Bowie of the contributions of different groups that have sometimes been overlooked or have not received the same attention. In the United States, March is celebrated as Women's History Month, a time to recognize and honor the contributions and achievements of women and their role in U.S. history. Since the passage of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote, there have been continuing efforts towards making sure that women have full equality in the United States. Workplaces, libraries, organizations, and different public facilities all celebrate and participate in Women's Heritage Month activities, and we are so glad that the city of Bowie is proud to celebrate Women's History Month. Again, please check out our website to learn a lot more about some of the contributions of outstanding women, I'm just gonna highlight a few, I think my time is limited, so I'll try not to be before you all night. The theme for 2022 for Women's Heritage Month is Providing Healing and Promoting Hope, which focuses on women who are frontline workers, caregivers, and others that have been promoting hope and providing healing over the centuries. So just to highlight a few of the women that are on the city's website, I wanted to bring your attention to former Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who inspired the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act, making it easier for women to have gender equality and also to be able to win their cases for pay discrimination. Vice President Kamala Harris is the first female vice president and first black and Asian American to hold the position. Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, the branch that's here in the United States today. And we also have some famous women from Bowie, former TV talk show host Kathy Lee Gifford, songstress Eva Cassidy, CNN correspondent Abby Phillips, who was highlighted last month in Black History Month, actress Caitlin Maori, and politicians delegate Geraldine Valentino Smith, and of course, our distinguished council members Ingrid Harrison and Roxy Indubumado. Also, in the month of March, we celebrate Irish Heritage Month, along with observances of several disabilities, including Developmental Disability Awareness Month. Since 1991, U.S. presidents have issued proclamations for Irish-American Heritage Month every year. And according to whitehouse.gov, in 2022, President Joe Biden of Irish-American Heritage proclaimed the month of March to be Irish-American Heritage Month. And I'm going to read a quote from his proclamation. He noted that "Many Irish immigrants arrived on America's shores to escape the great famine, only to face discrimination, prejudice, and poverty. Despite these hard times, they helped build and fortify our nation into what it is today. Irish Americans contributed enormously to the American labor movement, championing safe working conditions, advocating for children's rights, and fighting racism, prejudice, and income inequality." Well, we also celebrate Irish heritage on St. Patrick's Day on March 17th, and that's often at a pub or a meal with cabbage and corned beef. However, did you know that in Ireland, St. Patrick's Day is a solemn religious holiday commemorating the death of St. Patrick, who escaped slavery and became a bishop who established the Christian religion in Ireland? And the corned beef and cabbage, that's really an American tradition that was established by Irish immigrants once they came to the U.S. Well, what about green, which has legendary been said to keep the leprechauns away? Well, that wasn't the original color for St. Patrick's Day, rather, it was blue, which is represented in the Ireland, Ireland's Constitution and Coat of Arms, and is Ireland's national color. However, Ireland is known as the Emerald Isle, and that's why people wear green, along with the fact that St. Patrick used shamrocks to teach about the Holy Trinity. Today, St. Patrick's Day celebrations include parades and celebrations of all things Irish. According to the U.S. Census, over 30 million Americans, I think the last count was up to about 33 or 36, but over 30 million claim Irish heritage. I claim by marriage, my last name is Dixon, and, but that's about one out of every 10 people. And there have been 23 presidents who have Irish-American heritage, including former President Barack Obama, Bowie's former mayor Fred Robinson, for which the street address for Bowie City Hall is named, and several former council members, including Dennis Brady, who was instrumental in establishing the Diversity Committee, are Irish-Americans. Now, just in case I left anybody out, is there anyone else up here in council members that claims Irish heritage? Okay, Councilmember Wolfley, okay, thank you very much, didn't want to leave anybody out. Want someone in city staff?
Mayor Ad-
Mayor Adams?
Yes, my grandmother was Grace O'Leary.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Well, we celebrate all Irish-Americans in the month of March. Now, also in the month of March, we, it's dedicated to raising awareness and appreciation of persons with developmental disabilities. Now, there are many different disabilities that are highlighted throughout the months each year, and National Disability Employment Awareness Month is celebrated in October, and we usually give a presentation on that in October. But March focuses primarily on persons that are differently abled in learning behavior, language, and physical and/or intellectual disabilities, or intellectual functioning, and typically, a person who has a developmental disability would be diagnosed prior to age 20. Edward Seguin was a pioneering physician in the late 1800s, known for his work with children with developmental disabilities, and was the first president of the American Association on Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. However, it wasn't until 1990 that the Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted, making it illegal to discriminate against persons with disabilities. Approximately 6 million people in the U.S., or about one out of six children, have been identified as having developmental disabilities. And what a lot of people don't realize is that most persons with developmental disabilities can live fully and independently with the right support. According to the National Association of Councils on Developmental Disabilities, the theme for this year's Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is World's Imagined, and if you go to the National Association of Councils on Developmental Disabilities website, you can even download free social media apps that were graphics that were designed and developed by artists with developmental disabilities. So thank you very much for allowing me to present for Heritage Month, Women's History, Irish-American Heritage, and Developmental Disability Awareness.
Mayor, you're on mute.
At this time, can we move on to any city boards and committees? I don't see anything on the agenda.
No, Mayor, we don't have anything for this evening on that one.
All right, at this time, we'll move to council announcements. What I'd first like to do is, so we don't hold him up, is I've received a lot of calls and questions about Party Headquarters and fights and different things going on there, disturbances there, and I've asked Chief Neskey, if you could, could you fill in the city, the residents, because I've gotten a lot of texts and all, and questions on what's going on with Party Headquarters at this time?
Certainly, good evening. We are aware of the various concerns stemming around the incident they had over a week or so ago at Party Headquarters, they had a large group, there was a fight inside the building, kind of spilled to the outside, there was some video circulating on social media about it. We do have a meeting scheduled, in fact, it's tomorrow, with the owners of Party HQ. They reached out to us to try to help mitigate some of the issues. I will say that we've had meetings before where we've had some issues with loitering in the parking lot after the establishment is closed. We worked pretty hard to get those squared away, and I'm hopeful that the meetings tomorrow will be productive and that we'll be able to address both the Party HQ owners' concerns, our concerns, and the residents' concerns all at once. So I will brief council and the city manager on the results of the meeting, but it is scheduled tomorrow, and we are on track to try to get things moving.
Chief, if you could also, I don't mean to keep putting you on the spot, but would you, could you give us some feedback, there was some concern also about some incidents at Bowie High School?
That was the other part of my day today, sir. We had a meeting with the principal, as well as the owner of Chick-fil-A. A little bit of backstory is that we have had increasing incidents in and around the high school, mostly regarding truancy and the behavior that accompanies that truancy, disorderly children or high school students, you know, going into Chick-fil-A, creating disturbances. We've had problems with the library of them doing illicit activity, including some CDS or drug use. So we've been working with the library, we had a meeting with them probably about a month ago, and we took some measures that have decreased the activity there. But we are getting complaints from the, from the surrounding areas about the kids that are skipping, or they're descending upon Chick-fil-A, upon dismissal from high school, and creating disturbances and being disorderly. So we're looking at a separate plan for that. We are in conversations again with the high school to talk about the truancy. The other piece of that is an ongoing dispute involving a small group of ninth graders that has been flaring up into two separate fights, including people that are coming from outside of the school to fight after school. We've been able to intercede on a couple of those and disperse the crowds. We've had a few flare-ups, there was a social media post about one of the flare-ups that happened in front of a parent. We again have been in contact with the principal, talking about that the issue has been tried, tried to been mediated once, they say that the argument is done, but somebody flares it up on social media, so it continues to grow legs, so to speak. In our conversations with the principal today, we agreed that probably next week we'll be having a virtual town hall, once we get our schedule straight, so we can talk about not just the loitering piece of it, but also about some of the issues in and around the school, and we can include parents and business owners and residents, and get all the information out at once, as well as make sure that they know what plan we have moving forward and how they can assist if we need them.
Chief, one last thing, and I think it's really important, and I want to thank Jeffrey and some of the others coming forward, because that's my neighborhood as well, where we've talked about the squatters and the issues with that, and I think it's important that, Jeffrey, I apologize for calling you by your first name, Jeffrey, but, and looking at some of the things that are being done elsewhere. And so, would you, can you just speak briefly on how we've tried to move forward, but I think what we're talking about, what they're talking about doing at College Park, maybe something we could look at, but that it hasn't gone unnoticed and unaddressed by us as well?
Certainly not, and it's a, it's a difficult thing to get ahold of. Even the state's attorneys, when it's time to prosecute, have issues. I remember one time in that particular neighborhood, we had to go and shut the water off to get the person out of the house, but even after we shut the water off, we had to cap it so they wouldn't turn it back on. So these folks are fairly resourceful and stubborn. Oftentimes, if we put them out, they'll come right back. They do a lot of subterfuge, a little bit of tangling up with the civil process. A lot of the issues become, again, as Mr. Cooper alluded to, the mortgage companies, and whoever takes hold of those properties are responsible for them, but they don't always follow up with either timely inspections, sealing of the houses, or even responding to our request for information. Because you can have a vacant house, and there's somebody in it, but if we don't have an owner, we can't charge him with trespassing, because we need somebody who's gonna come to court and be the owner or the victim of that property. So I agree, there's some, there are some holes that we can probably plug and address in a more seemingly, a timely, a timely manner. So look forward to working with code and looking at any possible updates to the code to help us address that a little bit better. But even though I don't think College Park's process is perfect, it's a, it's a difficult and complicated issue when there's so many parties, and you're trying to track down the true owner of the house, and get them involved, and get them at the table to manage the property properly. So I would be curious as to how College Park is doing it, and open to any and all suggestions moving forward.
Hey, that sounds good. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
No worries.
I'd like to make a comment too about the trash being dumped, the jacuzzi and all. Just to let you know, I did contact our county council member, as well as asked him to help reach out to the state, because some of that isn't actually on Bowie proper, so to speak, on our street, but we have asked, and we're looking at trying to make sure we address that. And I do appreciate everyone with your comments and giving us that feedback, but know that it didn't go unaddressed, and I've talked to our county council member, as well as the council, and we're also gonna see, to see if we can do, get the state to do more to help with that as well. Having said that, I will turn it over to any other council members who have any comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I know we've had a lot of talk here about our water tuberculation issue, and so I did want to bring back some good news. Last week, President Biden signed his $1.5 trillion stimulus, oh, not stimulus, a spending bill, his first bill ever. The city of Bowie has received, or will be receiving, $2 million through the earmark appropriations process. So I just wanted to come and tell residents that we're still continuing to work on the issue, and that our partners in the federal government, including Congressman Hoyer and Senator Van Hollen, have done a great jobs through the House Appropriations Subcommittee process of getting us those $2 million. So I just wanted to publicly thank them and let residents know that more help and more aid is on the way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I feel appropriate that we also thank our lobbyists, because they did Yom On's job in working on that, and trying to make sure that we got that. Though some of us have been working on that for several years, I do want to thank them for all the work they did, and yes, it is great that our congressional staff have come through for us, and we're looking forward to even more money to be able to support our- looking forward to even more money to be able to support our tuberification here in the city. Any other comments from, any council members?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Just a, just a couple of quick comments. The first is, there was, there was a question presented earlier about what should happen should we lose two, two of our members to higher office. The first, I'll start off by saying, please forgive us if we don't respond back as part of public comment. The public comment period is an opportunity for people to make public comment, but it's not an opportunity, it's not set up as an opportunity for back-and-forth dialogue, question and answer, that sort of thing. The forum wouldn't lend itself to that, and just as a matter of general consequence, we'd end up with meetings that lasted until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning on a regular basis. But anyway, I am able to answer your question for you very quickly. The answer is, the remaining council members would select their mayor pro tem. If, if the current mayor pro tem, there'd be a vote amongst the council members, and that person would act as the, as the mayor pro tem and also the mayor during that period. Subsequently, because if, if, depending on the timing, there would be elections for filling any vacancies that would come of, of any elections in this, in this coming cycle. Anything closer than a year, within a year of the natural election cycle for our council would be filled with an appointment, if it's less than a year, but if it's greater than a year, there'd be a special election. So, that would put us in a position for a special election should such an occurrence occur. Regardless, if someone were to just leave because they moved or what have you, that's the, that's the procedure for that. So, thank you for, for your question, and I hope that explains why we didn't all just jump in and start yack-yacking with you on that, and please don't take offense on, on that as well. The next comment I have is, actually, I was gonna, was gonna comment on the, the funding for, for the water as well, and we do indeed have a great appreciation for the efforts for, for our congressman and senator for working on this. So, thank you very much for, for that, and we should arrange for appropriate thank you at some point in time. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Any other comments from any of that council members?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Councilwoman, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, I have two comments to make regarding the squatters issue. I've been working with Mr. Cooper and our legal counsel and code enforcement on this issue, and will bring forward more information soon, so look forward to that. Also, I wanted to share with council, Mr. Mayor, I had preliminary discussions today with WSSC along with Councilmember Gardner, and I wanted to ask council if, from my conversation, I believe it's worth some further exploration, so I wanted to find out if we could provide direction to city staff to meet with WSSC and report findings at one of our April council meetings. Would you all be okay with that, Mr. Mayor?
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I contacted WSSC several months ago. They've been taking some look at that. I think it would be important that we do some of their ideas now before council and before the citizens, so we can discuss that particularly with the city manager as well.
City manager, good to go with that.
Got it.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, councilwoman.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't want to keep us here all night, but I got something real quick.
Go ahead, please.
Um, on the issue of the foreclosure that I think, that residents expressed tonight, I can tell you that my colleague Dufour and I, in our neck of the woods, have had a number of challenges over the years with a lot of businesses that have set up in residential areas, usually performing services from housing folks who may be either elderly or dealing with disabilities. We had a series of community meetings in our area a couple of years ago. We brought in city and county code enforcement. I think we had public safety personnel there as well, and they kind of debriefed us on, you know, how the law works with these properties, what the processes are. I would really encourage you to reach out to my colleagues, Ingrid Harrison, Adrian Boffo, or if you'd like to talk to staff tonight. I know they'll be very happy to work to set up similar meetings with you guys. Code Enforcement City and County will be happy to come out, hear exactly in detail the challenges that you're dealing with, and give you advice on kind of best practices and how, how to work with them effectively to try and address a lot of those issues. On the question of the law, I know there's been some discussion back and forth on, on what realistically we can do. I do understand that we reached out to College Park to take a look at the ordinance that they passed, and I also spoke to their mayor last week. He, he gave me kind of mixed opinions about how that rule has been helping them or not helping them, but the short version is foreclosed properties are heavily regulated by the state, and so there may be some avenues there that exist that can give some relief in the event that you're dealing with that. I think, from what I've heard, a lot of the challenges you guys faced were specifically related to the pandemic and that a lot of the judicial process was just not working during the pandemic as things ground to a halt. It's possible that's why your situation lasted for so long. I'm not 100% sure about that, though, but just based on the feedback I got. So, I would really strongly encourage you to reach out to us, and we'll see if we can't get a meeting with you guys and some officials to figure out how we can best address these issues going forward.
Any other comments from council members? Hearing none, we will now move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, residents, and I have two issues tonight. One, I'd like to talk about the community workforce initiative that was passed by the council last April. Just to summarize what that was, is that, I'll read the summary paragraph of the resolutions, is now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Bowie, Maryland, that a pilot community workforce agreement shall be incorporated into the FY22, '27 procurement, street resurfacing, and water distribution system recapitulation projects that meets local and minority business requirements, Maryland County prevailing wage requirements, diverse in workforce stipulations, and strive to provide community opportunities for minorities, women, disabled persons, disadvantaged business owners, and certified MBEs to participate as contractors and suppliers. So, we are, we are working, we have two projects that are forthcoming. One is the, we're working hard on the, the next phase two of the, the water system repair, which is a 3.5-mile repair, which would be incorporated in and supervised by that and directed by that resolution. Also, we have the annual paving project, which is normally around $1.9 million, which would be incorporated in that too. We are currently really close to hiring the contract specialists that we, that you all authorized last year. Really tough hiring people these days, but we're close. If not, whatever happens with that, we're gonna, we're gonna implement this as for sure. And so, as I said, the upcoming contract for a street resurfacing and water distribution system will be incorporated with the requirements of the resolution. And as you might be familiar, labor availability has significantly changed in the past year, and there are further restrictions in labor can be assessed for this work, will impact future contracts, and it may cause some, an extension to contracting process, and it may reduce or affect the number of people who bid on the project. But we'll see what happens on that. But, but I just wanted to know that though, we have, we are on course with that. We intend to incorporate that resolution into our bidding process, and we're, we're really close to hiring the contract person to help us get it all right. The other thing I wanted to mention is the, the, the plan for the 3.5-mile replacement of, of the pipes that I mentioned. I'll simply read an email that I sent to the council on March 15th. I said, "Dear city council, we cannot send out a bid or RFP until we've had our engineer consultants design specifications for the next project. Here is the timeline for the next plant slash plan for the next pipe 3.5-mile replacement." Bullet number one, we are currently in the design phase, and in accordance with the standards, standard engineering procedures, our civil engineers, consultants is designing the project. This is a time-consuming process that should be completed by mid-June of 2022. This has us ahead of schedule in accordance with our FY22 budget by several months still. Bullet number two, between mid-June and the 1st of September of '22, the city will send out a, a bid, an RFP, after we get the, the engineers do their, their design. And, and of course, we will then have to analyze the bids, and there is a process, a legal review, once we select a, a person, and, and that, that can take 45 days, depending on the situation. We expect, bullet number three, the construction should begin in mid-September of 2022. This project should be completed in nine to 10 months, with May or June of 2023 being the end date. Please note that this project will be listed in detail in FY2023 proposed budget, and for any questions, give me a call. And I, I will stipulate that there is a, the, the workforce issue could slow the, the bid process, and just as a matter of my experiences, the last 23 as a local government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, city manager. We appreciate the detailed information.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Any questions for the city manager? If not, we will move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, is someone saying something?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Go right ahead, councilman.
Thank you. Quick question, follow-up on that, Mr. City Manager. The $2 million we anticipate receiving from the, from the appropriations, how much of the, of this project total tab will that cover? Plus or minus?
Well, it would, it would be an estimate here. Considering it might cover that extra mile of the project, right now, I would, I would guess it's going to cost us $6 million to do three and a half miles, but, but that was, but I'm thinking with last year's frame of mind.
Sure.
With the spiraling inflation and the, the log jam, you know, things are going, our bids could come in very high. We don't know, I hope not, but it could.
Thank you much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, city manager. Any other questions from any other council members for the city manager?
I just have one comment, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry. Follow-up is?
Go right ahead.
I just neglected to thank earlier council members, Harrison and Gardner. I believe met with WSSC to have some conversations and get some good information about ways in which we might be able to collaborate, support our system, and I didn't give them recognition for that earlier, I forgot to, but I just wanted to say thank you to them for that. We all of us up here take seriously that the city water and sewer system needs to be a priority, and it has been for many of us for a number of years now. And so, we're leaving absolutely no stone unturned, and we look for solutions to the system, and I really appreciate the work and support of my colleagues in that effort.
I'm assuming I'm getting a thank you there as well, councilmember? Okay.
Were you at the meeting, Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
No problem.
I apologize, thank you, Mr. Mayor as well.
Moving right along to the consent agenda, if we have no other questions for the city manager. I'll entertain a motion at this time for the consent agenda. Approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none? The motion carries. We will now go down to old business. I don't see any old business. Is that correct, city clerk?
Correct, Mayor.
All right, we will now move into new business, and the presentation on Tanglewood Park from the city's MAPS Subcommittee. I'll turn it over to the city.
Mr. Lucier, you've got the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come present to you this evening. I'm going to give you a short presentation on Tanglewood Park. My name is Bill Lucier, resident of Old Town area, member of the MAPS Committee, and also organizer of the Friends of Tanglewood organization. I'd also like to quickly acknowledge several members of the MAPS Committee here, holding up their hand, we've got Kim Cooley, John Pocagney, Josh O'Luden, and John Cheesedale here to support me. So, yeah, just, I guess, I got this thing. Okay. So, just to quickly orient those who may not be aware of where Tanglewood Park is. It's up near Old Town, kind of sandwiched between Chestnut Avenue and the Lanham Severn Road there in North Ridge. Been there quite a while. Here's a zoom-in closer-up picture of it. You can see it's off to the northwest is the Amtrak line, east is the Pope's Creek railroad line, and to the south is the North Ridge. About 128 acres, just a natural area that I want to talk to you about this evening. As you can see from the picture, the property is entirely forested, and it has two entrances. One is up towards the north on Zug Road, which is where the, the main entrance, if you call it that, is. And the second one is, there is a path that leads down from North Ridge and kind of dead ends there before it gets to the stream. It's sited on a kind of quiet side street, so it's, most people don't even know that it exists. Just a quick little bit on the history of it. It was originally a farm until the mid-20th century, and I understand the, the farm burned down, the farmhouse burned down. You can still see the foundations of it in there. In the 50s and 60s, it was a, there was a ball field there, and it just slowly became reforested and fell into disuse as a ballpark. In the 1990s, when North Ridge came along, they blazed some trails in there and turned it into a park, and it was active for a while, and then slowly fell into disuse through a bit of, not enough people and probably some neglect. And in the mid-part of the last decade, it was removed from the city's list of active parks. What you see there in the picture is that's what the entrance looks like at the moment. There's some Jersey barriers there, not terribly envir- and you really wouldn't even know it's a park unless you knew what was there. No real place to park, you got to park on the side of the road. Tanglewood today, so in the last year, year and a half, several of the citizens have gone in there and started clearing the trails some. One gentleman in particular has done a tremendous job of clearing and remarking the trails, but we've taken some steps to kind of revitalize the park, get it used a little more. The old trails have been cleared, a couple new ones have been put in. All the trails have been marked, and we've put, you know, hiking, blazing flashes on trees as you go through, so it's fairly easy to find your way through. But access is still kind of poor, the park, park is an issue, and awareness of the park is fairly low. What you see there is in the, where the path comes down from North Ridge and just kind of dead ends, and if you go another 20 yards, you hit a Ford over the stream where my dog is standing there in the water. So, we would like to address both those issues of the parking and access, things like that. This is a map we did up of all the, the trails in there. This is a map we did up of all the, the trails in there. They're all colored and like I said, properly marked. There's over five miles of trails in there for anybody to use. Wonderful for walking. It's a lovely place to walk your dog, experience nature, enjoy some solitude and should be So I mentioned in the last year, we've taken some steps to try to improve the park some. Recently, very recently organized the Friends of Tanglewood to help muster resources to maintain the trails and, you know, to establish a constituency, if you will, to help advocate for the park. And as you can see, we set up some modest goals for ourselves to basically preserve the, the park as a natural resource for generations to come. And perhaps even to discourage some activities that are not in keeping with the park. You know, there's been a couple entrances of poaching and unfortunate instances of dumping in the past, dumping trash. But we'd also like to, as I'm here this evening, advocate for these goals with the city or the county or whoever else will listen. So, yeah. What we are thinking of the future, would be a little more explicit what we would like to see for that future. We'd like to see the park re-designated as a city park. We think this would be a good step to getting more citizens to use it. Like to put a welcome sign and a presence on the city's website. We'd like the jersey barriers to be removed and a small gravel parking area set up. There's room in there for four or five cars at the current, or parking spots at the current Perhaps a trash bin and an information kiosk installs and periodic attention and tender loving care. The, you know, our group is pretty good at maintaining just the, the basic things and picking up branches and keeping the, the minor maintenance up. But sometimes we could use help with occasional larger issues, like if there's a, a large tree that comes down or one or two there, we affectionately term, term as widowmakers because they're overhanging the, the trail, but a little bit more dangerous to bring down without a bigger saw. So, yeah, that's basically what we're looking for and we'd like the council to consider and the staff. A couple other just notes that you may, may or may not be aware of, but there is a segment of the Bowie Heritage Trail that is planned to go through the park if it ever gets funded and built. And then if the CXX Railroad Company ever abandons the Pope Creek Railroad Line, the county has already expressed an interest in turning that into a major north-south trail, which would be a tremendous boost to the park. But I also think it'd boost Bowie as the northern terminus of a trail that goes all the way down to the Potomac. You know, within, right there in Old Town, so kind of keep my fingers crossed that, that eventually, eventuality turns out to be true. Couple upcoming activities. Our first organized activity as a group, we'll have a spring cleanup on Saturday, the April 2nd of, from 9:00 AM to noon. This is in conjunction with the city's already planned stream cleanup. We're going to do the, the streams and areas around that in the park, hope to get some citizens out to help us out and pick up trash and pull out a few tires and other stuff that's in there. Also, an open invitation, anybody on the council or staff to come explore the park with us. We'd love to take you on a trail walk and show you what the park is all about and why we think it's something that should be worth preserving. So I encourage you all to check out parks sometime, you know. If you enjoy a walk in the woods, a little peace, a little solitude, I'm confident that your effort will be well rewarded. Last couple slides, just a plug for our new organization. If you happen to know one, someone up in the Old Town area that is interested in this kind of thing, would like to join, my email address is there on the, the bottom. And lastly, if perhaps you know somebody's interested in these kinds of things like, you know, active amenities for the city, walking and biking, placemaking, but maybe don't live next to Tanglewood, they could consider joining the MAPS Committee. We are always looking for motivated citizens to lend their support. And with that concluding, I want, again, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, first and foremost, Bill, I'd like to thank you for excellent presentation. I'd also like to say to you and, and someone would volunteer, I would love to be able to assist however we can, particularly in looking at how we can make sure that it's an accessible, several trails through there, because that sounds exciting, sounds like something we do want to hold on to. So however I can assist, that we'll be doing that and I will turn that over, particularly as we talk about making the city more accessible to those with disabilities. I would love to be a part to help with doing that. So having said that, again, thank you for the presentation and I'll ask if any of our other colleagues on the council have any questions?
Yeah, a few, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mayor Protem?
Well, Bill, thank you so much for coming today and presenting to us. I mean, this sounds like a phenomenal project. I think more green and keeping our green in the city is obviously important. A couple of questions for staff as we move forward here. First, can we talk a little bit about the re-designation process and what that actually looks like? And then I think I have a question for Bill after that.
Well, the re-designation process was, is a policy decision. I mean, you all have to determine whether you want to re-designate that, that as a park and, and then we would have to take the assignment to appropriate, to tell you what it would cost to do so and all the things that are listed. But first, we'd, you'd have to give us direction to do so. It's not currently planned to be in my proposed budget, but you all can always, we can always make adjustments. There would be some additional, you know, we have, we're staff for the workload that we have, so that, that would, we'd have to adjust that way too, so.
Thank you. And then I guess Bill or city staff, if anyone can help me answer this question. How much are we talking about with the new vision for this park? I mean, we don't want structures or major facilities, which are usually the most expensive pieces of it, no paved trails, again, another expensive piece of it. Do we have a rough estimation on how much this new vision would actually cost?
We haven't, we haven't investigated it, Mr. Buffalo, but, but we, we'd have to look at it.
Yeah, I, you know, to be fair, that I tend to always underestimate the costs of things. If you ask my wife, it, you know, what I think should cost like, you know, $1,000 to put in a gravel parking space, you know, by the time it goes through city contracting, it bid out, it ends up being $2,500. So I, I think it's relatively low amounts of dollars in the single thousands, but, you know, really, the, the staff would have to give proper estimates of that. And, you know, we, the Friends of Tanglewood have talked about doing a, you know, some of this self-help, you know, get people to donate some materials and work with, you know, the staff to make sure it's acceptable and whatever we do. But honestly, we don't have any huge ambitions, you know, some, no new ball, ball fields or basketball courts or any of that stuff in here. So I'm, I'm fairly confident it's low dollars amount that can be spread out over a period of time. But, you know, it's like anything else, has to be, you know, it's competition for resources that has to be weighed with everything else.
Yeah, well, I'll make one last comment here and then let my colleagues take it on from here. I mean, look, I think this is great, it sounds great, and I'll definitely take you up on your offer to come out there to Tanglewood myself personally. The one question I kind of have for council and for my colleagues here and for staff as well as we kind of move forward is have we thought and should we think as a process, a manner of process here, whatever the minor improvements are, whether it's from $30,000 to $50,000, look at asking on the state level through appropriations, trying to get some dollars there that can help us offset our costs if we decide to do this? And more importantly, looking at the same thing on the federal level, just as we've done with our, our water system, just again, for offsetting costs here, right? I mean, I think the argument is made that we're preserving a natural resource here in our community and we probably can get some dollars elsewhere if need be. So I just kind of opened that, I offered that as an open question for consideration. Obviously, on the state level, it won't get done this session, but it still will allow us to be able to have future conversations next session for it as well. So just curious of what the folks' thoughts are on that as well as we move here. But Bill, thank you guys and the rest of you guys for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Any other members, if any, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment, I'm intrigued by one of the items that I saw on there on your deck was the interest on the part of the county on the CSX Trail. That's something that I've been pushing for and know that we've had some conversations as a council as well. Who, who at the county is working that? Anybody?
Guys, remember the gentleman's name who we had for our meetings about a year ago? Braxton or Patton? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. I think it would be a great asset to the community. I think to, to the comments you made earlier, it'd be a wonderful thing to have a, a network that would stretch all the way down to the Potomac, a nice path all the way on up to, to Old Bowie, which we're doing our part to try and stimulate some interest in and to provide purpose and I think that's just another, another opportunity there.
A few, few years ago, I had read that the, for those of you who don't know that, the only purpose of that railroad right now is to bring coal down to the electrical plant in Southern Maryland. There was an article, it was probably five or six years ago now, speculating that that would be converted to natural gas sometime in the years following and which would negate the reason for that, that railroad line. That has not happened yet. I now honestly don't know what the, the plans for that is, but that was the whole thing that stimulated this conversation about maybe that railroad line being coming open.
Yep, that is actually underway. I know at least one of them has shut down.
Okay.
Another's been converted to gas. I think they had three facilities or three generators across two facilities, but there is still a coal burning facility down there and they still, still run the trains.
Yeah, I know there's fewer trains going behind my house, so.
It is, it is indeed the case. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Another question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Bill, and I totally support the project, the Tanglewood Park project. And they certainly asked all the questions that I had for you. My only question now is for my colleagues is could we move forward pursuing the re-designation process to get the cost and information from city staff?
Madam, Councilman, here's, here's what I'm prepared to do, based on, if you all are so inclined. I'll, you know, we can establish a CIP project, which would be titled, "The Reestablishment of Tanglewood," and then phase that project, that process over the next three years, so we don't take, take on any more in this, in this new budget, because based on the guidance that we got in January, it's just going to be a nice budget. And it's going to really take, and so, but, so that would give us an opportunity to coordinate with Mr. Lucier and, and, and these good residents and have our recreation people sit down and map out a plan so that between now and '26, we can have this, this park back and where, over that period of time, we can, you know, in a phased and reasonable fashion, do one thing or another to get it to the right point.
Sounds great, thank you. Also, City Manager, are there grants we could look at for this particular project?
I, I suspect that the Mayor Protem is right, that they're out there and, and given the coordination with, with this, this group and, and our grants team, we can certainly pursue, see if there are monies out there in, in either with the state or feds.
Right, I mean, I was thinking outside of that, outside of our current, you know, senators and, and congresspeople, but other grants that we could look at.
Right, I mean.
Specifically Hill Parks.
Right, someplace between DNR or, or federal MDE, there's, there's, there's got to be money for, especially the reclamation of, of a park that's been, suffered dumping and all those kind of things and, and, and so we, there has to be, so we believe there are.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks everyone. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just jump in again. Bill, you're okay, I'm sorry, not going to make you get up again. I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Josh Wooton, who took over the committee from Dustin Kazan when he organized it several years ago. Josh, you've done a great job making sure the committee is growing and continuing to stay active. This group, Ken, John, John, Bill, Pat's not here tonight and several others, were really instrumental in helping the city put together its Trails Master Plan. You guys gave tremendous feedback, that was really helpful in that. You guys have been really active, working, giving advice on development projects and a number of issues in the city. And I'm really excited that you took this particular project on. No one will be shocked to hear that I was skeptical when you guys first brought this to me. I'm thinking, oh man, you know, I already hear the complaints from the North Ridge neighborhood and, you know, all the other challenges, but you guys have done really great work. This is a fantastic presentation and I agree with Councilmember Harrison that there's no reason why we shouldn't pursue the re-designation of this park as, as a formal city park and begin working to funding the, the items that you have brought to our attention tonight. So thank you so much for everything you continue to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you again for your presentation. We will now move on to item B, the Escalibur Road Traffic Complaints and Concerns, and I'll turn that over to city staff.
Mr. Mayor, I think first we should hear from Mayor Protem, who asked us to put this on the agenda so we can begin the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. This is a broad District 3 issue. I singled out Escalibur just because I was in the neighborhood a few weeks ago and was touring and kind of experienced the issue myself. Look, as we come out of this COVID pandemic, what is starting to happen is that more people are in their cars, more people are traveling, more people are on the roads and it's not as quiet as it used to be and obviously that will continue to happen as the health protocols are lowered. Escalibur Road in particular is a challenge for a lot of our residents in District 3. What happens is that if you are coming out of any of those neighborhoods, what folks do is they cut past 301 and kind of speed at high speeds and it causes a problem for residents who are trying to exit their, their neighborhoods. As you can imagine, Escalibur Road also has Pin Oak, a senior home that's also situated right there. These are active adults who are out walking on Escalibur. And oftentimes, if they want to cross the street to go to a park, literally right across the street, it can become dangerous. But I, I singled out Escalibur just because I was there, but this is an issue that's happening all across District 3, right? If you look at Church Road, I do not want to get into my holy gospel about Church Road and the problems that it faces, right? There are just a lot of roads in this district that present a challenge. And so what I wanted to do today, I did invite some of the residents from that community to come out. I do not see any of those folks here today. However, I do think it's important, and Jose, you can feel free to jump in here, to kind of reiterate again, as we're coming out of this pandemic, what the process is for residents who want to go through a, a change on a road. But more importantly, I'm, I'm curious as to what are some new innovative ways in which, not necessarily putting speed bumps everywhere, that there's an issue, but how can, I'm curious as what, you know, the latest and greatest is in your world, Jose, on, on what we can be doing to kind of put some traffic calming measures up, not just on Escalibur Road, but for any resident who wants to kind of move throughout that process?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, members of the council, good evening, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for the question. It is a very interesting item that you bring up and put it into Escalibur Road. I think that the problem, I will say, I observe that everywhere I go to Maryland. And I think also that, looking, when I received your email and I did some homework, and it's not just because we're coming back from the pandemic, this problem specifically in Escalibur Road goes back a few years ago, even before the pandemic. There have been a number of citations, a number of warnings by the police, our fine police department, and, but what I can tell you from the technical perspective, that Escalibur Road is designed according to the Manual for Uniform Traffic Standards. And so all the signing is proper and the speed is thirty miles per hour. From the technical perspective, this is a four-lane road and does not qualify according to the traffic calming policy that the city has adapted from the county. This type of street doesn't qualify for that. So, what I can offer is, right now, without knowing the specific problems, I can offer to the council from the engineering perspective, two approaches. One is the enforcement approach, which will be the installation of speed cameras. And the other one is to just go with the concept of complete streets from the engineering perspective and see what kind of design modification could, we could do to attenuate the speed on this particular road. With that being said, I think that, and I really don't want to get into, into the political aspect of it, any option that we want to entertain, some residents are going to like and maybe an equal or more number of residents will be opposed. So, all those are the things that I can offer. And to be honest, there hasn't been any improvement in terms of MUTCD standards, that's the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Design. So, ASHTO is the organization that developed those standards and the changes haven't been substantial or pretty much innovative.
Mayor Protem, the, you know, Escalibur is a, Escalibur is a major throughfare from the highway to Mitchellville Road for many residents, myself included. So, so to, as Jose mentioned, I realize that the residents there are having their issues, but if that, if there are significant modifications to that road in some fashion, I predict that there would be a lot of residents who would be upset about that, as you all know. Now, Chief Neskey isn't on still, but what I'll ask him to do is to focus enforcement in District 3, in Escalibur, and also to, as we go look at the speed camera, putting out additional speed cameras, now that we don't have to only put them near schools. It seems to me that that would be a qualifier. As we know, personally, I, you know, I've been hit by one or two of them, it slows you down. So, and so that's the thing that we needed, I think that would be the course of action that we should try to pursue, along with asking the police department to pay some special attention in that area for, with the community policing in the near future.
Yeah, thank you so much, Al and Jose. Just a couple of the comments. I agree with you, Mr. City Manager. I'm not advocating for some significant change to the road. I understand its current design model, I understand what it's meant to do, but, you know, at thirty miles an hour, you can imagine, I'm just saying, the city manager just admitted to it, not me, that sometimes folks go over in different parts of the city. I will be, I am an advocate for enforcement through speed cameras. I forgot that the legislation existed that allows it not to just be schools anymore, so thanks to those who helped us with that last session. And obviously, from the traffic control design standards, I don't think that's going to change anytime soon, nor will we have the power to do that. So, I would ask that we look at the speed camera enforcement and what that looks like, and I'm more than happy to schedule, sorry, Jose, go ahead.
One thing that I discovered during my research, fifty-five percent of the crashes occur at the intersection of Mitchellville and Escalibur, and that sign is owned by the county and administered by the county. The same, and 301 is maintained by the state, and that sign is also owned and maintained and operated by the state, just to be clear to everybody in the public that's listening.
Yes, and in 2019, we did two things, actually. Well, I'm sorry, in 2020, the beginning of 2020, we did work with Chief Neskey to put some enforcements there, Woodmore Highlands and a couple other neighborhoods, Old Stage, that were really in District 3 facing the burden of heavy traffic and speeding. So, the enforcement thing has happened and obviously those things are gone and, you know, folks have kind of reverted back to their normal habits. On the Mitchellville Road Escalibur piece, I'm aware of that in the county, I did speak to the county in 2020 about the issue, part of the issue is that there's no turning signal as you're trying to make a left or right on Mitchellville and it causes a lot of confusion. I get confused myself sometimes, I will admit that, and so I'm not surprised that the number is fifty-five, and I think we can be more aggressive as a council as we're advocating for that. That should be a simple fix from the county council folks and those folks in Upper Marlboro. But, but again, look, I'm an advocate for the speed cameras. I think it's great for, Jose, if you're willing to come with me to a couple H.O.A. meetings and let's have this conversation with some folks there, but I did want the folks in TV land to know and even the folks here who are from District 3 that, you know, I'm very aware of the issue and can see it myself as I'm driving throughout the city of Bowie. So, that's it from me and thank you guys again.
Thank you, and I'll be glad to attend any meetings that you ask me to go.
Hey, thank you so very much. And City Manager, I think that's a very good point, that we get Chief Neskey engaged and look at what we can do with traffic enforcement, but also with speed cameras. And thank you again too, Jose, for being with us this evening. We appreciate all your input and you've been doing a phenomenal job since you've come on board. Thank you again. Having heard that at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one thing for the good of the order, if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize that I neglected to do this earlier, I've been kind of absent-minded tonight. I just wanted to say a big thank you to Ms. Silvita Dixon for coming out tonight and for a great presentation earlier. Ms. Dixon, you've been involved, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Dixon, you've been involved with the city's diversity committee since its inception, if not mistaken, and you've been leading it almost since its inception, and your committee has been one of the most consistent and reliable in the programs that you put on, which have been tremendously successful over the years and have grown, in the advice and counsel you've given council at times when we've badly needed it. I just wanted to say a big thank you to you personally and to your team for your tremendous work. We appreciate you and we really value the hard many hours that you've put in on behalf of the city over the years. Really thank you for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Dixon, I would like to say, as mayor, I think you should be included as a phenomenal, one of those phenomenal women for Women's History Month for all you do. So, please know that you're included in that list of phenomenal people in our city. So, again, thank you for everything you've done. So, having said that, again, I just want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, respond with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hey, thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank the city staff as always for a great job. I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out and I'd like to thank my council members for the job they do. Please, everyone stay safe and have a good evening. Goodbye.